Today is Tuesday, October 11th, 2016. We have passed the 10 o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. At this time, if you'll just take a moment of reflection. And now, if you'll please stand, Supervisor Howard will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Introduction of new employees. Do we have any? Okay, seeing none. County Council, actions from closed session?
No reportable action.
Thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay. And we will get some brief reports or announcements from supervisors, and we'll start with Supervisor Getlin.
Thank you, Chairman. I hosted a town hall meeting at the Surf Apartments last week, selection season, and spoke with many constituents, answered lots of questions. Many were about the city, and of course, some were about the county. We also discussed some of the propositions, and there are 17 going to be on the ballot for the upcoming, so try to make some clarity for the folks there. Last week, I acknowledged the Jewish New Year, which is called Rosh Hashanah. It's the year 5777. We recognize that at our synagogue, Temple Beth Shalom. It begins an 11-day period, which we're in the median, mid-part of that right now, which are called the High Holy Day services, High Holy Days, and ends with the Day of Atonement, which is Yom Kippur, and that is tomorrow night, Wednesday night, Tuesday night, actually, tonight, and then Wednesday is the actual Day of Atonement. Attended the Crescent City Council meeting, where I observed the city lower the $75,000 financial threshold for the point of honor of folks who are developing the Veterans Monument at the Escur from 75,000 down to 20,000, and that will allow the fundraising to continue and actually groundbreaking to accelerate. So you'll start to see the, that particular project move forward fairly quickly now. Last Wednesday morning, I participated in the Safe Routes to Schools, and we participated at that Best Maxwell School. One of the subjects was discussed is how many children, kids, are riding their bikes to schools and not wearing helmets, and that's a bit problematic, so message to the parents, it's the law, please have your under-18-year-old child, and that's Best Maxwell School, and Joe Hamilton and all the other schools, if you're riding your bike to school, first thing you do when you get on the bike is put your helmet on. That's the message to the kids. Attended our local mental health board meeting, which was later that morning, last Wednesday, and also participated in final preparations of the Sea Cruise Car Show this past weekend. I don't have the numbers yet, but it's by all indications, we had great weather, of course. The numbers were maintained from last year, and it's another great event, the silver anniversary of the Sea Cruise Car Show. Thursday, I attended the Republican Women's Central Luncheon and listened to city council and harbor board candidates. And yesterday, I attended Sheriff's Department Organization of the Softball Tournament, which has been appropriately called Guns and Hoses, which is a great name. It's gonna, I think there are going to be four teams at this point, and they're going to play off all day Saturday, and we moved the date back one day, one week, to October 22nd, Saturday, because there's going to be some considerable rain this weekend. It's a fundraiser for the search and rescue group and the Explorer Program, and they'll have that October 22nd, and it'll be all day long with the championship game sometime in the afternoon, and it'll be at Pike's Field, and we hope you'll join us there. That's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
I also had some meetings. I'm going to be pretty brief here, though. First, after our last meeting, I left to go to the Regional Council of rural counties' annual meeting, where we did have a meeting on the Friday, but then a couple of days prior to that, full of workshops and presentations, everything from the implications of the Supreme Court and not having a full court, and what the prognosis is going forward, to medical marijuana and the transitioning into legalization, to all the different propositions, et cetera, et cetera. Always good to meet with constituents and find out what's going on in other counties so we can borrow their best practices to bring home here. Obviously, homelessness was one of the topics as well. Then I participated in a couple of others with, without leaving the area. The CSAC, the California State Association of Supervisors or of Counties, had a meeting down in Ojai, and it didn't make sense to spend three days traveling, so we had some teleconference on that, talked about the propositions, talked about the assessment of some of the officers, excuse me, not the officers, but of the CAO and some of the people running the organization, and the restaffing, and have a couple of retirements coming up there, as in RCRC as well as CSAC. Then also, the Western Interstate region was meeting at the same time over in Ashland, but since I couldn't be in two places at the same time, I did the telephone two places at the same time, checked in there. The Western Interstate of the National Association of Counties, obviously, we're tracking transportation funding, the rural set-asides, keeping an eye on, as we always do, bringing up support that's going to be needed on the entire western United States, and those representatives in Congress for our own last chance grade, when that comes before them. But Pilt, about $480 million a year that needs to be continued to fund it, as well as secure rural schools, our last payment, it went from, we were over 1.2 million, we're down around 900,000, even less than that, and our last payment's been received, so there is no other check to be cut, which will severely impact our roads and our schools, so we're working on a strategy to get that reauthorized as well. I also participated in Sea Cruise, great event, great weather, had a pre-homeless meeting where we set the agenda with all the different players, and for those who have any concerns or would like to participate in this community effort, at 1 o'clock at the Veterans Hall on this Friday will be the next ad hoc committee, and of course, everybody has always been invited to attend, as well as the newspaper, maybe they can get us some good coverage of the positive things that we have accomplished and are accomplishing en route to a long-term plan. And other than that, my youngest, Caitlin, turned 17 on Friday, and today, one of my granddaughters, Dottie, turned 17, so happy birthday, Dottie.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. As I'm closing down, I have less and less meetings every month, which gives me more and more free time. I participated in the Coastal Commission meeting in Ukiah, and it was a two-day meeting, and at that meeting, the City of Crescent City did some permitting in relationship to the coast walk that's going to happen to finish that out. The Senior Center, we had a meeting, and the Senior Center, right now, is in the best financial shape that it's been in, since our horrific discovery a few years back, so we're doing very well there. We are in desperate need of a wood delivery people, because we have a program where we buy, where we can assist people in low-income housing for their, for wood, and our two contractors have fallen off, and so we're in search of contractors that would like to have a wood delivery system. I think we have about 70 or 80 people waiting on a list to receive the wood, so if anyone out there knows of someone who is a wood cutter and delivers cords of wood, it would behoove them to contact the Senior Center, because we need to make sure that we keep everyone warm this winter. The Historical Society met, there's going to be a, everything is cooking along there fairly well, with the exception of the lighthouse still has leaking problems, and we need to figure it out ultimately, but it's such an old building that water has a way of getting in when it wants to get in. I've had quite a few emails that I've received about saving South Beach, and a plea for our community to take up the analysis of what a bathing beach is compared to the rules of what jet skis are required to do, and where jet skis are required to put in, and where they're required to stay out of the wave slope. So I think that it's something that would behoove this community to take a long look at and make a long-term plan of how we address jet skis. Senator McGuire is going to be here on the 13th at 4 o'clock for a follow-up meeting at Rural Human Services on the Homelessness Initiative, and also on October 27th, from 6 to 8 p.m., he's having a town hall meeting about the Homelessness Initiative and the Forever Home Initiative, and that will be broadcast, so you can go to McGuire's webpage and find the, the date and time. It's going to be, like I said, the 27th, it's from 6 to 8, but people will be able to watch from up here and see what's being said, because this is a lot of money that's going to come into communities for housing issues, and it's something that we need to be very focused on, and getting all of the necessary data in order to get the application together. And later on this afternoon, I'm participating in a meeting that is for low-cost visitor serving, and it's a, something that I've been working on for the last four and a half years, on trying to get, when the Coastal Commission has a mitigation fee, like for a hotel that's being built, they charge X number of dollars, and then that money goes into visitor serving, and it's for low-cost visitor serving, and we've been working on a plan of the possibility of taking old hotels in California that are just kind of creeping along, but most of us can't afford to stay in one of those hotels, compared to the hotels that are, you know, in San Diego Harbor, for instance, that may run as high as $500, $600 a night, and so we're trying to figure out a way of how we can have visitor accommodations, and what I would like to ultimately see is that those mitigation dollars become almost a revolving loan fund, and we would then be able to encourage the small cottage-type hotels up and down the coast of California to be able to stay as those types of hotels, rather than becoming boutique hotels where there are hundreds of dollars a night to be able to stay. So we're working, trying to get the, to formulate that. It's been a quite arduous process, but I think we're getting closer, so I'm looking forward to that meeting, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
We had a tri-agency meeting where we continued discussion around Chamber Commerce and the Visitors Bureau, and funding for them long-term, specific to TOT revenues that are generated through the city and the county, and concerns on how potentially those revenues are being spent. We also had a great deal of discussion about inviting the National Park Service to our next meeting to discuss the closure of the downtown visitor center, and I know Supervisor Hemmingson and I will be having a meeting with national parks and state parks here on the 14th, specific to that issue and other issues in the community, one being concerns by constituents in Hayuchi about a trails network that will be put in from Jed Smith Park towards the Hayuchi Town Site, that potentially will impact residents in that area. Had some discussions with Marissa Parrish and Justin Garwood of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, specific to Coho Salmon Movement within the Smith River, and how important estuary habitats are. Discussed with constituents, concerns around the Dollar General store, and continued concerns about possibly having a northbound turn lane into that Dollar General when it does eventually open up, and concerns that Caltrans, even though they went out and did a traffic assessment, said that that turn lane was not necessary, which I found absolutely amazing. Had a meeting impromptu, sort of speak with Elizabeth Ray, the new director of Talawadini Nation. Great discussion, specific to some issues that the tribe and the county have of mutual concern, specific to beach access, that are impacting residents with a lot of traffic on the beaches and potentially crime and drug deals going down on those beachfront properties, and how we can better address that with some potential closures of some gates, and hopefully we'll be able to get a two-by-two together again soon with the Talawa, and have some open discussions about what we can do about some of the crime in the neighborhood, and potentially access to the beach properties. Talked with some transportation issues, specific to Highway 199. A lot of concern recently with the large number of accidents that happened over the weekend when we had just a little bit of moisture. It seemed kind of crazy, again, that mile marker 10.5 claimed, almost claimed another life, fortunately it didn't, and just not even .4 miles from that, had another accident with a fatality, and we, we seem to be increasing our number of incidents along Highway 199 for whatever reason, and I'm hoping at our next local Transportation Commission meeting, which is coming this Thursday, we could address some of these issues of concern, because it doesn't seem that the measures that Caltrans has said they have put in place are actually working at this point. Had a conversation, specific to some concerns around tri-agency, with the California Director of USDA, Janice Waddell, and hoping to resolve some issues there, and then also had some brief discussions with Stafford Laird, who's the Deputy Director of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife concerning elk. I know it's been a, the board's spent a great deal of time and energy with elk in Delmar County, and the human conflict associated with elk in our county, and that conflict is increasing as the populations increase, but mostly that the board has tried to have conversations with the department in moving forward with their environmental impact statement, which will, we hope, help address some of these human and elk interactions in the future. And as it was promised to us last year, both directly to Supervisor Hemmingson and myself, that they would have that EIS back on the table in 2017, and I believe that the department will be addressing that with us when we attend their Fish and Game Commission meeting next week.
Could I ask? Yeah, Supervisor Howard, you and Supervisor Hemmingson, when you do meet with fish and wildlife regarding the elk. Regarding the share tags was a great idea, but in some areas, for, to be specific, the birch track, using long rifles to hunt elk in a residential neighborhood is not appropriate, and maybe you could address that, so.
Thank you. I had a few, a few meetings also, more issues with, that constituents are having, and I'll get to that here in a little bit. I had a meeting with California Fish and Wildlife and Community Development Staff, as well as County Council, about breach permits for Lake Earl. Coastal Commission is not willing to issue a permit to the, to the Fish and Wildlife and the county as co-applicants until a study is done, another study is done. We've been able to receive permits from all the other agencies, except for the Army Corps, which the Army Corps' permit is contingent on the coastal permit, so that seems to be a real issue. We don't have the money to do a study, and Fish and Wildlife don't have the money to do the study, and therefore, we're kind of left without any breach permits, other than trying to apply for an emergency permit, which has, and our last try has been unsuccessful, so I'm really concerned about that. It's in my district, and a lot of infrastructure out there for the county roads, people have septic tanks and wells that they're concerned with, so we'll continue on with that, and see if we can't come to some sort of resolution. I did a gender review, also with, I talked, had a conference call with Karen Kovacs from California Fish and Wildlife about Pacific Shores property, and they, them wanting to purchase properties again out there, as well as their fishing access points that, that they own, but they don't manage. The county has always managed them in the past. We had a maintenance agreement some time ago, that ran out several years ago, and so we're trying to get that all back on the, back on the table again, and get that squared away, so we'll probably be bringing more about that. A lot of, had a lot of constituent calls about the paper reporting a homeless camp, and where that was going to be, and how that was going to happen, and I had a lot of, I mean, a lot of calls on them, and I made a lot of calls to try to find out what was going on. Seems to be there's something that possibly could be going on out of Pacific Shores, but haven't got anything nailed down yet, but still working on that. Did go to Sea Cruise, enjoyed that, it's always nice to look at the cars that other people can afford to paint up and look nice. And also, as Supervisor McClure mentioned, the South Beach issue, I'm getting a lot of emails and information, and have met several times with, with both these recreational sides, I'm calling them sides, because they seem to be at odds with each other, the people with the personal watercraft, as well as the surfers, and hopefully, we can come to some sort of resolution without having to close beaches, but we'll see how that goes, and we'll keep on top of that. With that, that's about all I had, and we'll get a brief report from CAO Serena.
Well, since we last met, I've been involved in a few employee evaluations. I held a personnel hearing as a hearing officer, and had follow-up interviews, and we'll be dealing with an opinion at the end of that, and meetings with multiple department heads, attended the tri-agency meeting. I'll be, be in a little bit late, because I had a different meeting, but also had a meeting regarding our borrow housing and the fire that occurred up there, and the insurance company that we're dealing with and replacing it. Had the bid closing for the Flynn Roof Project, had a meeting with the Vet Cemetery Maintenance Contractors, and we were doing a transition there. Attended the Emergency Operations Center meeting. We are kind of kicking off again, we've lost a number of members, you know, they have cycled through, and we're trying to get three deep, so Cindy had a meeting, and we're bringing some new people in and getting trained up over the next year. There will be a training in Emmitsburg that will test our skills, and I think, I'll probably bring Cindy forward in the future to give kind of an update on OES, but she attended some conference down in the LA area, and it was kind of a, a light came on with her on how prepared we actually are up here, in compared to some of the large cities, because they have the same issues we have with turnover and limited people, but, you know, the emergency operations in Delmar County are pretty wide-ranging with a lot of partners, and that's always nice to know. I had a meeting with Animal Control to go over a few issues on, there, and some policy changes that may come forward to the board, and wanted to note that being a resident in the Smith River area, I've had the benefit of driving Fred Hay Drive, and there's a new paving job that was finished up out there by the road department. I'm pretty sure everybody out there's real happy, because that portion of the road was real rough, but it's, it's a good job, and appreciated at least by me out there. I'm sure there's a lot more, too.
Is that it? Okay. All right. It is now public comment period time. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment? Please come up.
Good morning. My name is Benita Cabrera, and I'm here on behalf of Seroptimus International of Crescent City, and were you able to give them the flyers? I left some flyers here for all of you, for some events that are coming up. Seroptimus is a group who Seroptimus is a group whose main goal is to empower women and girls to be the best they can through scholarships, through support, through programs and education. And back in the seventies, we started, early seventies, we started talking about domestic violence because other people weren't talking about it. And we see how well that went. Everybody's talking about it. Everybody knows about it. It's widely known that domestic violence is happening. So now, we've taken on the task of educating communities and helping to end human trafficking. So this evening, we're going to have a community viewing of the movie Sold. I won't read off the flyer the details about Sold because you have that in front of you, but I will tell you that it's a, it's definitely a call to action. It is a hard movie to watch. This young 13-year-old girl is trafficked from Nepal to a brothel in India. So it talks up, the movie depicts the things that she went through, how she was taken with, not without her will, she went willingly to work but had no idea that that was the type of work that she would be forced to do. And then it goes, the movie goes through her experiences at the brothel and how she is freed from it. And it really gives a voice to millions of children that disappear without a trace. And they're being trafficked often for sex, sometimes for labor. And when they're finished with them, they just get rid of them. They kill them. They black market their organs. I mean, it's just a really horrendous thing, what happens to people. And if we don't talk about it, we can't end it. So here I am to talk about it. And this movie is from six to eight tonight at Four Square Church. And the church holds 300 people, so I'm hoping for standing room only. And October 21st, Seroptimus is offering an opportunity for really anyone in the community, but for certain service providers, a training about human trafficking, the red flags and the language that's being used in the trafficking world that we don't understand. And until we know the language, we won't recognize it when it's said to us. And so, this training is $45. It's going to be catered by Terry Davis. I believe we're having Indian tacos, but I know this is on a recording, so she's almost, has to do Indian tacos for us now. And then the trainer is Elle Snow, and she's from Humboldt County. She's a trafficked victim turned survivor who is now training our local law enforcement, our service providers in Humboldt and Delmar Counties. And she's also started her own 501(c)(3) to help women and children who are being trafficked, once they're out of it, help them fit back into society. Some of them really don't, they were taken so young that they don't know, even, they don't even know that they're being sex trafficked because they don't know there's a term for what they're living in. That's how out of reality that their lives are. And so, it's our responsibility to learn as much as we can and to share our information with people so that we can, like domestic violence, make stopping human trafficking as important as stopping people from hurting others in marriages and in relationships. So I don't know if you have any questions, but that's pretty much the information I have. The training in October on the 21st will be from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so it's a full day of training.
Great.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing no other public comment, then I'm gonna close the public comment period. You'll get the opportunity to speak on other items that are on the agenda as they come up. Okay, it is now past 10:30. We're gonna hold a public hearing, waive full reading and introduce the proposed ordinance to allow First Five Commission to divine, to define that its current's membership of not less than seven nor more than nine will include two non-voting alternate members as requested by the Executive Director of First Five Commission. Is anybody gonna speak on this?
Hold chair, I'll go ahead and speak to it. I thought the Executive Director would be here. Actually, the change is rather simple. Rather than appointing new people to the board as per the regulation or the resolution already allows to be full-time members, we thought we would start with alternate members. It allows for a little more flexibility. It allows for us to make sure that we have a quorum all the time and to engage more people that, in the community that might want to begin to serve on the Children and Families Commission. So I would ask to go with the recommendations, which would be to open up the public hearing and then waive the full reading and introduce the proposed ordinance to allow the commission to define its current membership of not less than seven or more than nine will include, will include two non-voting alternate members.
Okay, so, so I will open, so I will open the, yeah, I think it was, but I will open the public hearing and ask for any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, then I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board.
And I would reiterate the motion, please.
Okay. And the second, Martha? I just had some questions of why, why do you need approval for alternate non-voting members? And it seems like we just went through this and changed the number of members not too long ago. When, it seems like when ordinances go on like this, that should last a little bit longer than the period of time.
Well, you're exactly correct. We did change, but what we did not allow for was to have alternates. And I think anybody that's been in any commission for any length of time understands the value of having alternates.
I understand that, but they're non-voting, so what?
Well, they're non-voting, except that if they take the position of somebody that's missing, then they become voting, as alternates do.
All right. That's all explanation that I needed. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing and any more discussion, board members? Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Getlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, since we've got a little bit of time, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Moves to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item 10 from the consent agenda for additional discussion.
Second, minus item 10.
You want it pulled as a separate item to be voted on, or you just wanna?
No, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to, I happen to support. I think it's a great idea. I think too many times in consent agenda items, these things go by and they don't get announced.
Yeah.
And I think this is an opportunity to explain this very good program, and that's why I'd like to have it discussed.
Okay, so we're not gonna pull it as a separate item, we're just gonna have some discussion on it?
Second.
Okay, and I have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Good morning, Chief Probation Officer Lonnie Raymond. Regarding item 14 on the agenda, unfortunately, I haven't had an opportunity to speak with Director Snow about this, so she's unaware of my request. The probation department is in the position of being the certifying agency for batter's intervention programs in the county. It came to our attention last week through the court. The court informed my officers that Mendwind, the, the company before you in item 14, communicated that they're not currently providing capped programs in the county, which is the child abuse prevention treatment. This has caused some consternation on our part. And seeing the item on the agenda, I wanted to address that and respectfully ask that the board table it for a couple weeks until I have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Romano and clarify whether there was some miscommunication with the court and he is indeed continuing to offer the program, or whether there's some steps we need to take to get him back up and running with that.
Okay, thank you. So I'll ask the maker of the motion if that's okay to pull?
Sure, I'd like to hear from the, either Snow, who brought it forward first.
Okay.
Sure. I would have appreciated the chance to communicate before. That certainly could have happened in advance, but it's no problem for us to take it off today and discuss it and bring it back to you.
Okay. So no objections on your motion?
No objection.
So we will remove item number 14, bring it back at a later session? It's okay with?
Second that change.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second. I would like to have a little bit of discussion about the Fish and Game Commission. These are both people from your district, David, I believe. Do we know what district is being represented on the Fish and Game Commission? Now, we used to all have someone from our areas or someone that we proposed, and these, both these people are from the, actually from the same residents from their applications. But I'm just curious as if you were contacted first, David, or?
No, I wasn't. I've had conversations with the Chair of the Fish and Game Commission regarding getting it staffed up so it could be more effective. But I was not aware of these, and I, I really don't even see the, the address that shows that they were, the complete application.
Their address is in there. I mean, that's where I got it from.
Not what I got.
Oh.
Anyway.
Okay.
But it looked like it was diverse, one, you know, and I certainly, if they're here, like to hear from them.
I mean, I have no issues with them. I don't know, I just was curious.
No, I had not.
The process, I didn't realize that they were short on people and that we had, we had put, we must have put these out for, we didn't put them out.
Uh-uh.
These are just coming forward from the commission itself?
Yeah, they get dropped off to me and I forward them to Jackie, and she requested that those two get placed.
Is that normal procedure, Jay? That doesn't sound right.
It has been, but typically, if, the way the ordinance reads, they're, they're from the districts themselves, the individuals. We have had trouble staffing that commission for many years, and the board has embedded those and decided amongst the board whether or not they want to continue to pull those people in even though they're out of district. So you may have some from, you know, four from District Three and one from District Two, or something of that type. But, you know, they, they have had trouble staffing it. I haven't spoken with the, anybody from the Fish and Game Commission.
Is that something that the county usually puts out and advertises for, or is that something that the, the commission, the local Fish and Game Commission?
Generally, the advertisement would come through us. The Fish and Game Commission has been, like I mentioned, they've, they've struggled over the years keeping people in there, and they've actually went out to find people to be on the commission.
Yeah.
Supervisor Howard's been on there and understands that, too. So if you'd like, we could get those to the specific supervisor and bring it back, or you can vote on it. I mean, it's up to you at this point.
Yeah, I, I am very happy to allow these two people to be on there. I just wanna make sure that we're following the correct process, that this isn't stepping over the bounds or anything. The people, you know, people that want to serve on there, I, you know, I applaud them. I think it's a, I think it's a good thing, and if they're willing to do it, I'm all in favor of it. I just wanna make sure that we're going through the right steps.
It's following a cooperative process through the Board of Supervisors that, you know, we know that we needed staffing and this, and volunteers are difficult to keep a lot of times. So the board has pretty much cooperated amongst the board over the years to make sure it had a diverse group of users versus professionals, et cetera. But it has been very difficult to keep staffed.
Okay, great.
And that's an excellent point. I know, I'm all for these two individuals as well, based on their credentials, but we used to break it as to users as far as professionals and et cetera. Make sure that that balance is reached also.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, Jay, what is the full complement of that board? Seven or nine?
I believe it was two from each district. And it was about, it was intended to be 50/50 with users and professionals. And like I mentioned, over the, over the years, it's been difficult to keep the ratio as well as to keep a quorum.
Yeah, I know, they're, I'm aware that they've, they've had many meetings that they can't conduct because they don't have a quorum. So I didn't know if it was nine, or seven, or how many they actually need for a quorum, but they've not been able to do business.
Two per district.
Again.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I just have a question in relationship to the MADDY Act. Are we not required to fill positions of commissions and boards that we are, the MADDY Act kind of structures the, the method in which we are required to advertise and do that kind of filling? And when was the, if, if we are, when was the last time we followed the MADDY Act in relationship to this one?
I don't recall the last time we've advertised. A lot of times, we've left these open just because of the problem of getting volunteers.
So that would cover the MADDY Act? If we, if we left it as open?
Okay. The other thing I wanted to discuss was the Adopt a Road, the Adopt a Road Program. This was something that we had on our plate some time ago, and I kinda re-initiated it and kinda prodded Heidi a little bit to get moving on it. She was, acted very quickly, and I appreciate that. I did have some constituents ask me about the Adopt a Road Program. So maybe if you could explain a little bit how people get involved and that type of thing?
Sure. Thank you. The program, we're really excited for it to get off the ground. It's something that we've wanted to do for some time. And as Chair Hemmingson just mentioned, we've already had interest from at least one service organization who is interested in taking on a portion of Washington Boulevard. In, essentially, the program would be, a group would come to us, they would have a minimum of one mile of county-maintained road that they would want to be responsible for cleaning for a period of two years, say, two to four times per year. We would recognize them by a sign at each end of the cleanup segment that they selected. We would provide them with the equipment and the bags and so on. There is a Adopt a Road Program that is included with your agenda packet that provides all of the details to those interested. There are release forms, you know, acknowledging the fact that you will be working adjacent to a road facility. Let's see, some of the other things, safety aspects. We wanna make sure that people are, you know, don't get poison oak and all of those types of things. So if you have any questions, I have our county road superintendent, I know he's really excited about this, seeing it as a real benefit for, for us as an operational aspect.
Sure, great. Any questions from board members? Roger?
Yeah, for Jeff and for both of you. First of all, great job. I'm very happy to see this. Question one, I have a couple, three questions. Question one, will this pretty much mirror the Caltrans program, Adopt a Highway, in terms of protocol and the process and the requirements, et cetera? And there are a number of groups, local groups, who participate in the Caltrans program up and down Highway 101. So is this pretty much a carbon copy of this?
Yes, it is. And our council has reviewed it and also compared it to Caltrans and to other, what other counties are doing throughout the state.
Okay, excellent. And the second question, as Mr. Daniels already knows, he hears from me all too often about items on the county roads that need to be picked up. I'm sure this will perhaps lessen the amount of calls that I make to you on this, but what about larger items when a sofa is dumped or something like that? What's the protocol there?
Generally, the larger items will be picked up by the road crew because we have to use a piece of equipment, they're too heavy. So a lot of times, they'll get wet, mattress or something like that. So, you know, in order to prevent workman's comp claim, we'll use a piece of equipment and make it easier. So that's what we do.
Now, the program calls for biannual cleanups twice a year is that by design, I think the Caltrans program is every six to eight weeks. Are you anticipating that two weeks, two, two cleanups a year on county roads will keep the roads clean, or can we up that number perhaps?
I think it's dependent upon what the organization feels is necessary. Some roads may warrant more, some less.
Okay.
You know, I mean, if it becomes an issue, that would be something that we could have a conversation with the group leader about, but obviously, they're, they're helping us out.
Absolutely. And when do you expect this will effectuate? This program?
Well, if, if your board approves it today.
Oh, great.
It'd happen not soon. And actually, Jeff and I were speaking earlier that we would like to post it on the county website, just to put it out there, so if you visit our website, we'll be aware of it.
And while I've got you both right there, and this is a subject that's not on air, I don't know if this is the exact time to do it, but I see Ms. McKinney is here. The Cooper Street and Jay Street, we approved a plan for a crosswalk there. And, and is the holdup something other than us?
No. It's not, it's not entirely just us, but it is probably mostly us. So thank you for the reminder, and yes, this is something we're working with the city because it's a joint issue, and it's been on the table, it's been off the table, it's been on the table, and we will get it back on.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I just wanna say that I, that Caltrans has some pretty good training videos for I just want to say that I, that Caltrans has some pretty good training videos for, I participated in a, in a highway cleanup, that I bet that they would share because it talks about the safety and how many people need to be at each event and that kind of thing and what you need to wear and what you should touch and what you shouldn't touch and that kind of stuff.
Thank you for that suggestion. We will contact them.
Good. I also want to commend you on the Adopt a Road. I know that you have unofficially, as the Road Department, Jeff helped us quite a bit and I'm talking about the Dundas Neighborhood Watch where we did Parkway and do, continue to Parkway.
Yeah.
Couple of times a year. And you provide the vests and the bags and stuff like that. So this formal acknowledgement is excellent. Great job.
It's a great program.
Appreciate it. Anybody got anything else? Okay. And with that, Kylie, would you pull the vote please on the consent agenda?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number 16 for a conflict of interest.
And Chair, I just want to reiterate something that was brought up. A lot of times on these consent agendas, we don't spend as much time, we do, we spend a lot of time on going over the, the contracts and all the paperwork, but the public is not aware of everything that goes into it. And such, you know, such cases also on item number nine, which was the resolution to submit applications on the Cal recycle for up to a million dollars on a five-year program for blighted areas and, and, you know, whether it's mattresses or couches or whatever. I think there's about $175,000 worth of asks that the county could fill immediately today. A lot of people don't think the county does anything. It's these kind of grants that fund the effort that we do. And on top of that, I think last year we spent about $135,000 on the blight just from the Board's perspective. So love to see stuff like this. Keep up the good work.
Okay. So we're running just a smidgen behind. David, I appreciate your patience. We're going to get an update on the Smith River National Recreation Area.
Dave Palmer, District Ranger on the Smith River NRA. So I'd just like to, once again, thank the Board for the opportunity to come down here. I do appreciate it. Travel management. All right. So Carol, she's our NEPR Coordinator. She's finishing, finishing up the edits, the formatting of the document. She should be done this week and then she'll get the, the notice in the, the legal notice in the register and then it'll be available. So almost there.
Okay.
That'll be, that'll be good to get that rolling. We're also got teams out this week. They're doing a 10-day tour out on Gordon. So they're finishing up the mark or trying to finish up the mark. And I think their last day is right before the big storm coming in, so we'll see how much they get done. This time around, we brought in a more experienced crew. The first one was kind of eh. So this one, they were supposed to be more experienced and so looking for a better product this time around. The Gordon D by D, they're calling it Harden D by D. So we got staff working to finish the contracting package. Once that is done, then we can advertise it and hopefully by the end of the month. That's what MIRV would like to see. So we're steaming ahead on that. POC gates. So we're in the process of closing all our gates. I think we got one or two left. I think we timed it pretty good with the end of deer season and hopefully we'll have those closed before the big storm. I've been told five to 10 inches, maybe more, so.
Maybe more is what I've heard.
Yes, it's going to be big, so hopefully our roads hold up. Pile burning? So we'll start pile burning. All of our fire crews are back. We've got about 110 acres scheduled this year, kind of scattered between Big Flat, the Gordon Project area and Hauchi. So they'll be doing that throughout the winter. What else is going on? It's fairly quiet up there. Haven't had a whole lot of complaints, but, you know, we do encourage the public when they're in the Gasky area to stop by our visitor center. We have lots of good information about the area. We've got friendly staff. You know, we like to get feedback on what we're doing right or what we're doing wrong and how we can do better. You know, bottom line, we're, we're here to serve the public. So we encourage everybody to let us know what we're doing. I think that was it.
Yeah, and I just might say that, and I did this not too long ago, I was kind of surprised that, that you get your pass, that you can get a, if you're a senior.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's 60, is it 62 or 60? 60?
Oh, no, I have one.
Yeah. Anyway, I went up and got my pass, but I was surprised that you couldn't get it at the Redwood National Parks Office. You have to go to the Forest Service Office. So if you're up there and you're in that, somewhere around that age of 60-something, they'll give you a pass for $10 and you can visit all the national parks and all the Forest Service stuff at a reduced fee and then some, sometimes for parking. Around here, our state parks are included, other than the Tallawood Dunes, which I don't think there's a fee out there anyway. But the state parks are included in that because there's a management MOU between them. So you, it is pretty beneficial for, especially for locals, so.
Oh, definitely.
Little advertisement for you there.
Thank you.
Dave, I appreciate it. Any questions from, yeah, David?
All throughout the state, tree mortality is a big deal and now even Senator Feinstein is approaching it from the national level. Most of it, I think, is on the Sierras.
Yes.
Are we seeing any of that yet?
You know, when they came up and mapped, you know, maybe some little smots and I think it was down more on Mad River. You know, every time I drive home, I do look at the hillside and I seem to think I see more snags up there every time. So I bet you we are getting some, but not to the extent that the Sierras.
Yeah, I used to tell people, no, it hasn't affected us yet for one reason or another, but was quickly advised that either you have a tree mortality problem or it's coming. And I'm just.
And, and I think, yeah, it is going to come.
Well, if I could just speak to that, because I did have this discussion with MIRV George and he said that their target, the commercial target is 24 million board feet to extract from the entire Six Rivers Forest, that, not just Delmore County, but Humboldt County also and Trinity if there's some in there. That, the entire target is 24 million and he has 60 million board feet a year die.
Yes.
So there's.
That fails to compute.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, and the 24 million comes from the forest plan.
Yeah.
And so hopefully when we do forest plan revision, we visit that and.
And the 60 million comes from the death of the trees. Anybody got any other questions? Chris, Martha?
David?
Roger?
Dave, again, thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate the updates. They're always very informative and we need to pay attention. So thank you again.
No, I do appreciate it. And for next month, I'm going to try to make the second one because I am down, Fire Hire starts next month and I got two weeks down in SAC, but yes, I will try to rearrange my schedule so I can come back and hopefully be able to tell you the travel management is out on the street and the D by D is being advertised. So, yeah, always appreciate it.
Okay, great. Thank you again, David. Okay, so we're going to, since we've got an 11 o'clock timed item and we've got a few minutes, we're going to go on to legislative and budget issues. Jay?
I'll try to make this quick. On the federal level, I think people may be aware, but Congress passed a 10-week continuing resolution to fund the government. It will come back again. I believe it's on December 9th when they will be discussing it again. Hopefully we can come up with some solution in the future so the funding can be more stable. On the state level, the Governor has signed or vetoed a number of bills and just to put it out there, Senator McGuire's Pilt Legislation that would have required the mandatory payment of pilt was vetoed. And so we will continue to work with Senator McGuire on that language.
And that's it? Yeah. Okay, so we are.
Three-minute break?
Yeah, let's take a three-minute break. 11 o'clock, we'll have Kristi do her presentation on the STEP program. Kristi, are you going to come up and?
Are you ready or you want to break? Well, I think I'm ready. I've been waiting, getting our nerves out ahead of time, so it's glad, I'm glad that we're kind of at the end because there's not many people to, to listen. I know. Well, well, don't remind me of that. My name is Kristi Hernandez. I'm the manager of the Delmore Workforce Center and we're here to just kind of give a little update and information about our office. Some of you might know, if not all of you, we were formerly under Rural Human Services and as of July 1st, that has changed. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, we O A contract for Delmore was given to Siskiyou Training and Employment Program. And we, because of this change, we've also moved our office and I believe some of you have received some invitations to our open house. We are now in the corner of Fifth and I and we'll talk a little bit about the open house a little later, but I have Josephine here. She'll introduce herself and tell you why she's here.
Good morning. I'm Josephine Toms and I am the Business Services Coordinator at STEP. I've been there for 26 years. And I am here on behalf of STEP. Our Executive Director, Joan Zarzinski, she's been over here numerous times working with Kristi and getting everything together. She wasn't able to be here today as we're having our annual audit and she thought she better stay at STEP for that. So I came over here and just here to support Kristi and if you have any questions about STEP, I'm here to answer them.
Great, thanks, Josephine.
So the Workforce Center and STEP or Siskiyou Training and Employment Program are two of the AJCCs or America's Job Centers of California funded under NORTAC, Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium, of which Chair Hemmingson is on the governing board. At our office, we tend to have an average of about 500 visits per month and that's just means the number of times a person comes in our door. It could be same person, you know, every day, but it's 500 visits either to our lobby or to meet with staff, to look at our job listings or to use our computer lab. Currently, Department of Rehab is located in our office and we're hoping that soon Department of Health and Human Services Cal Works staff will also be joining us. So I think, let's just hope that within maybe the next month or so, they'll be also co-located in our office like they were before. Our focus at the office is to assist job seekers in finding employment and then also help employers find employees. So some of the services that we offer, we have a computer lab, like I mentioned, that has eight computers and people can go in there and do typing certificates, can look for jobs online, they can do online applications, get resume assistance, cover letters, things like that. We also have a copier and fax machine that people can use. It's free for anybody that needs to make extra copies of their resumes. We have all the paper, paper for them to use and also if they need to fax something for a job, we don't charge anything for that. We have job listings, both in our lobby, on a touchscreen computer for people that just go through the different categories. We have healthcare, retail, hospitality, and they can just print out the jobs that they're looking for right then and there. Before, we had a wall of a bunch of different copies and so we thought we'd try to go a little green by having a computer set up. So it's teaching people that are not so computer savvy to, they're like, oh, I like that board better where I could just go grab a paper. But I think, you know, once we teach them, it's touchscreen and to make it easy, so it's, I think it's going, going through well for people coming in the office. We also have our job listings online on our website and those job listings, we pull from everybody, like the triplicate, the tribes, the hospital, the school district, the county, all to make it easy for the job seeker to find that job. They could just have to go to one location, look at the long list. It's about maybe 20 pages long. So when people say, there's no jobs in Crescent City, we say, there is, there's a long list here. It just depends on what you're looking for. Some other things that we help with are occupation-specific training, so in our area that's mainly healthcare. And we are helping right now 19 L V N students and four R N students. In the past, we've helped with police academy training, with paramedic, with truck driver training. It just depends on what's maybe on the state's eligible provider list for training and then what makes sense in our area too. A couple other things, we do on-the-job training. So for eligible job seekers, our office can reimburse the employer for up to 50% of the new hire's wages. If the new hire, say, has kind of the basics but needs a little bit more training to be up to par for the position, we usually will pay up to 50% for that time period of that training time, choose about a month or so. And for youth, youth for us are 18 to 24-year-olds out of school and they have to have some sort of barrier, either they're parenting or they're basic skills deficient, dropout, homeless, or they just haven't really had a full-time job ever or never had a job. We can help them with paid work experiences. So we place them in a organization or business that is maybe something they have interest in or they kind of want to explore a little further. And the Workforce Center pays all wages for that program, so it's nice. The employer, it's no burden on them except for training that youth and training. The employer, it's no burden on them except for training that youth and trying to get them the soft skills that they need, and maybe some of those hard skills, too. And I think that was it. So our open house is November 8th. I know it's Election Day, so some of you might be busy, but we would love to have you come down and see our new office.
What time?
That's from 5 to, starts at 5. Okay, 7 probably. There'll be refreshments and some snacks, so we would love to have you come and check it out.
Okay.
And thank you for having us come and talk, and if you have any questions.
Any woodcutters?
Oh, I was thinking while you were talking about it, I might, I'll take that back and see if we get...
Supervisor Howard?
I was hoping you could expand a little bit about the youth training and that program. What ages, again, were...
18 to 24.
Okay, so it's not really high school-aged youth?
I wish, yeah, because now, because of the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, they've switched the, how we spend our funding for youth to focus more on out-of-school youth. I wish that there was some way that we could still help, especially with the younger youth. You'd want to get them that experience early on, you would think, so they wouldn't have issues later. But because of the funding and how our regulations are, we had to focus more on the out-of-school. But there's still a huge need here.
The second question that I had was specific to mechanics, mechanic-type training, and then in addition, commercial truck drivers. Have you ever worked locally? We have a general need for them, and it's very hard. We have to do quite a bit of broadcasting across the state of California or even Washington just to recruit.
Yes, I've seen...
What are you doing with those, you know, there is, if anything, with local residents?
Well, with mechanics, we have in the past, we've helped a couple individuals with. The schooling, though, that seems to be very expensive, right? Have you seen that also, and we, and it's...
A lot of it's the training provider, in order to send them to a school to learn that. The training provider has to be on a list, a state-approved vendors list, and if it's not somewhere local, you know, sometimes it's hard for somebody to go and add the area and do that. So, and on-the-job training, those are the things that we look for, for that type of training. Maybe somebody wants to hire a mechanic, and they can train him, and like she said, we'll pay for their training.
And we could even pay for possible certification needed, I would imagine, too.
Right, right. Those kind of things.
And truck driver training, I know that College of the Redwoods was going to try to have something here locally, because they know that they have it in Eureka, but I don't know if that just never panned out, if they didn't have enough interest. I'm not sure what happened there, because we would, we said we would try to advertise for them once they got to that point, and unfortunately, and it's only every now and then that we get somebody come in and say, you know, I want to be a truck driver.
Really? It's interesting, because we have a great need for it, and I would suspect you'd have that opportunity. I'd love to hear if you could follow up on that and see what maybe the stumbling block with CR was.
Okay, yeah, I could do that.
On another note, we, where we're at, CISCU County, we train a lot of people for truck driving, because it's just down and ready, and a lot of them can do that. And so we have quite a few requests. So we do a lot of truck driver training and the jobs that are out there, but I wouldn't mind getting some information, because if people are willing to relocate, or if you have some jobs available, it's always good for us to all work together.
Definitely, yeah.
Cool. David, anything?
No, I'm glad to hear that Cal Work Social Services is going to be joining you again. I know, I mean, a lot of your programs, I'm surprised, happily surprised, that you still have that job training. I mean, I'm going to date myself, when I was on the Private Industry Council, we'd see the programs and stuff like that, right? So it's nice to know that those are still available, and that there is going to be a coordination with welfare to work, if you will. But the availability of jobs in this area is far greater than people realize, and I'm glad you highlighted that. And along that lines, how did your job fair go for the 100 jobs that were supposedly available in the area?
Well, that was a Rural Human Services job fair for us, Support Living Services. So that, I had sent staff to go meet with employers while they were there, but, yeah, we didn't have any invite. Our normal job fair that we have annually is usually in the spring, and we have that at the fairgrounds normally. Then we partner with the county.
More than anything, it's, glad that you came and made us, gave us a presentation. We haven't had one of these years, so thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Roger?
Well, Kristi, continued good luck in your new location. You're on your own, independent. We'll see you at your open house.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Josephine, good to see you again. Kristi, thank you very much for the presentation. They were kind of forced into this by NORTAC, so...
Kind of, just a little, yes.
But it is a good update, and we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so if there is no public comment on that presentation, and nobody has anything else, I think we're done. We are adjourned.